All right, we're still under ordinances for introduction. And our proposed ordinance number 2017-17. The following ordinance was proposed by councilman. Who would like to propose this one?
Oh, we got off of 2016?
I guess.
It's by Councilman Benton.
Benton?
Yeah.
What about 16?
All of them are for Benton. All right, all these, you, Councilman Benton, okay.
What about 16?
And as in the ordinance reasons. As mandated by LSA RS 391305 to fund for the projected complete year of computer supplies and expense for the administrative department, this is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1822, the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana. All righty.
Proposed ordinance 2017-18.
The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton. And as mandated by LSA RS 391305 to fund for the projected complete year of office supplies for the recreation department, this is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
Proposed ordinance 2017-19.
The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton. As mandated by LA RS 391311 to adjust beginning fund balances to actuels per the 2016 audit, this is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1822, the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
Proposed ordinance 2017-20.
The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton. As mandated by LA RS 391310 to fund for the change in operations and as mandated by LSA RS 391305 to fund for the projected complete year which has occurred due to replacing the certified building official position for the remaining year of salaries, other subcontractors for the regulatory department. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
Proposed ordinance 2017-22.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, oh, twenty-one, sorry.
As man, the following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton. As mandated by LA RS 391310 to fund for the change in operations as mandated by LSA RS 391305 to fund for the projected complete year due to addressing the city's 2016 audit report findings regarding lack of segregation of duties and internal controls hereby requiring the increase of salaries and related expenses for the court department. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
Proposed ordinance 2017-22.
The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton. As mandated by LSA RS 391305 to fund for the projected complete year of health insurance for all departments and the general fund, this is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
Proposed ordinance 2017-23.
The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton. As mandated by LA RS 391310 to fund for the change in operations, to fund for the change, it repeats itself, to fund for the change in operations which has resulted in improving the city's ability to track garbage fees for the sanitation department. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
Proposed ordinance 2017-24.
The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton. As mandated by LA RS 391310 to fund for the change in operations necessitated by the city no longer charging residents for recycling services for the sanitation department. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
Proposed ordinance 2017-25.
The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton. As mandated by LSA RS 391305 to fund for the projected complete year of training for the administrative department, this is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
Proposed ordinance 2017-26?
Yes, ma'am. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Wheeler. An ordinance amending ordinance number 1822, the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana, and this is for the civil service department.
Old business?
Civil service college list board members, terms expiring July 29, 2017.
Ms. Winhurst has agreed to be nominated for another term on the civil service board. Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote to confirm?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Hewitt. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Do I have a mo, motion to accept Ms. Winhurst on through a second term?
Motion to appoint her just as a motion?
A motion for a vote. We just, yeah, we did. All those in favor?
Yea.
You just did.
Yeah.
And he, well, now, to proceed with the vote, that all those in favor of confirmation?
Yea.
Any of this approved? We have five yays, zero nays. Ms. Winhurst is reappointed.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda since we're talking about the civil service. I see we have under new business governing authority appointment for the civil service investigation on eight seventeen, excuse me, eight seven seventeen. Can we move that up to new business? I know Mr. Credo's been here, and I'd like to discuss this before time runs out.
I'd like to get this.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she said Ms. Baller. I apologize.
Mr. Glenn Landry is being nominated for another term to the civil service board. Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by?
Second.
Councilman Wheeler, all those in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. All those in favor of confirmation?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays, and Mr. Landry is reappointed.
All right.
I have a motion on the table to, before the board, to amend the agenda to move?
Number five.
Number five, under new business, to?
Right now, I guess.
Second.
By Councilman Wheeler, seconded by?
Second.
Councilman Hewitt. All those in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Granted.
Mr. Credo, if you can step up, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good evening, everyone, Mayor, and all the councilmen, my friend Gil. I was asked to address the question about the August 7th investigation that is being planned. We have discussions hopefully planned that may make that meeting settled. We may be able to resolve some of these issues, but in the event that we don't, there'll be a meeting on August, an investigation conducted by the civil service board concerning an incident from March of 2016. As a result of that, subpoenas have been issued to many, many people, and one of which is the mayor. And so as the course of the meeting will take place, the witnesses will be sequestered. At that point, the appointing authority would not have a representative in the room. And so if in fact that someone else wanted to be appointed to be the representative, or if the board wanted to determine someone else to be able to sit in during the meeting while the mayor was sequestered, that might be an appropriate thing to do. There's no requirement that you have someone there, but it would certainly be welcome if the representative of the appointing authority, which would be the board and the mayor, would actually want to have someone in there if the mayor was sequestered. So the board rules specifically provide for sequestration, and so it's an investigation. It's not a disciplinary hearing. There are no real parties at interest, except it's an investigation being conducted by the civil service board as a state appointed, as a state agency basically operating within the city of Harahan. And so the question had been placed to me, what happens if the mayor gets sequestered? Who will be representing? And I said, well, maybe the council would want to designate someone to be her represent, be the representative during that time period. And so that's why I'm here, to suggest that if that hearing goes forward, the witnesses will be there, and that, you know, there may be a sequestration.
Mr. Credo, I have a question.
Sure.
This is a public meeting, isn't it? Your investigation?
It is.
It's an open meeting?
It is.
So any member of the council can simply show up and sit down there and look?
Absolutely. And they're all welcome.
Right. And, and Mr. Credo, just to clarify, are you saying that the council is the appointing authority over the unclassified employees of the city of Harahan?
Saying the mayor, with the approval of the council, is the appointing authority, yes.
So the council would have to approve her to be the governing authority?
No, the governing, the governing authority is the?
The mayor.
Mayor and the council.
Mayor and council, okay.
Right. And the appointing authority is the mayor with the approval of the council.
I'm not sure what your point is.
I'm not sure what this has to do with what we're talking about. I'm sorry. I'm just saying, I'm just here as a courtesy because I think it's appropriate for openness, and certainly everyone is welcome. It's a public meeting. But during the course of public meetings, certain witnesses will be sequestered primarily to?
Which leaves nobody there.
Which means that there'd be no one there from the city, and so I thought you might want to have somebody there.
The representative of the unclassified employees is the mayor or her designate. That's, and I don't want to litigate this, but that's?
I don't either.
That's the law. She appoints the unclassified employees. The council has nothing to say about that. The civil service board has nothing to say about it. We're going along with your investigation in hopes of avoiding litigation.
We are.
But I, but I'm, I have to take as a city attorney, an absolute position on this, and if any one of you has ever elected mayor, you're going to thank me for doing this. The mayor controls the unclassified workforce of this city. Civil service has nothing to say about the unclassified workforce. Now, if they want to ask questions of the unclassified employees, go ahead, conduct the investigation, that's fine. But the mayor controls the unclassified workforce of this city.
No one is suggesting anything to the contrary. What, what I'm, what, the unclassified, this is, does it, this is a question concerning the classified system for the police and fire?
Correct.
In the city of Harahan. To that extent, we subpoena witnesses. It could be a plumber. It could be a city employee. It doesn't matter whether they're unclassified or they work at the Chevron. They're witnesses. They are fact witnesses that we are hoping, or I believe the board is hoping, is going to bring information to the board which will allow them to take a vote on a classified employee's rights and benefits. We will never take a position, or I will never advise the board to take any position as to unclassified employees, but that doesn't mean that because you're an unclassified employee, you can't be subpoenaed to a hearing. You can be subpoenaed to a hearing because you're a citizen.
Sure.
And they have the right under the state, and I'm sure you'll acknowledge, and you could probably quote the statute to me better than I could, that the subpoena power for the civil service board is obvious. Each member of the board is given the right to subpoena to the vote.
What I'm trying to understand is what the council has to do with this.
If the city wants a representative in the meeting to represent for their position as part of the appointing authority to the classified service, they may want to designate someone.
Because the mayor is the?
Because the mayor may not be there, so you may be sequestered.
For the fire.
Yeah. So, that was the only point I was trying to make, was that it's, everybody can be there. We welcome everyone to come to the meeting. It's a public meeting, public, open meeting laws. We have no problems with that. It was just a question of, I mean, I didn't mean it to become anything with cities. I really was trying to be?
Helpful.
Helpful, because I thought that, what's going to happen? Okay, we'll be in the meeting, the mayor may be a witness, the man may be asked to leave. Oh, now we don't have anybody in here representing the city, and should that be, should we keep going? It was just an idea of, well, maybe somebody else from the council would like to be designated to be the representative in the event.
I'm the attorney. I'm the attorney for the city. I will be there representing it throughout the course of your investigation. If any council member wants to?
You're certainly welcome.
If any council member wants to show up and give their input in your investigation, they are certainly entitled to do that. But the representative of the city of Harahan in your investigation will be me.
For the?
As city attorney.
For the city attorney?
I, the city attorney will be there representing the city of Harahan in this investigation. If you disagree with that, I invite you to take that up with the attorney general.
I have no problem. Look, if I understood that the board wanted to have someone there, if you're telling me that this board can't vote on designating someone to be there, be my guest. It's, I, I'm just suggesting to you that I?
The board, the board, Mr. Credo.
I have not heard any motion by anyone to designate you as the representative, but if you want to be, you're certainly there to be the city attorney.
No.
And I have no problem with you being there.
No.
And I was hoping that you would be there.
The council, the council.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint a representative.
I'll second that motion.
A representative of what?
Mr. Credo, can you please say the words for me?
Representative of?
Is it governing authority?
Governing authority. Right. Right.
So I'd like to point Councilwoman Wheeler. Could I second myself?
I'll second.
You referred, you said that the mayor was?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to, look, do, do what you, do what you want to do. I'm sensitive.
Mr. Credo, the council can appoint?
I believe the council can appoint someone to act as a representative.
And that's only in the event that the mayor is sequestered? Is that correct?
In the event the mayor is sequestered.
Well, she's been subpoenaed, correct?
Right.
So she most likely may be sequestered?
Yes.
Okay.
And what date is this on, August 2nd?
Who's on first?
And what time?
I believe it's at 10:00.
10:00 AM in the morning.
Is it here?
Yes, sir.
In this chamber?
Yes, sir. I take that as you will be there.
I will be there.
So I make a motion to appoint Councilwoman Wheeler. And I have a second.
I have a second, I'm second that.
I'll third.
Yea.
Do you want me to call for the vote? The mayor's not calling?
I've seen you, Councilman, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Yea.
Yea.
I'm going to take over, but it's called a question.
They called a question. You gotta, you gotta do, you gotta do it.
Yes, sir.
All right. Call for a vote. Yays?
Yea.
Nays?
Nays. And I'm assuming I can't vote for myself, is that correct? I would have to abstain, so it's?
Thank you, Ken.
I'll be there. Thank you, Mr. Credo.
You're all quite welcome.
We appreciate your help. Thank you, and I'm sorry you had to wait so long. I apologize. Okay.
Feel the love?
You enjoy the vote.
You feel that, that love, that Harahan love? Should we affront you?
New business?
All right, new business number one. Appeals Board and Planning and Zoning Board nominations and appointments.
I have one question about the appeals board, just the appeals board and the planning and zoning board. For some reason, I thought you said that under state law, that each planning and zoning member has to have four hours of training, or they cannot vote, yet?
No, I didn't say.
I'm just asking.
I said four hours of training, if I'm saying anything about there being agents of voting not. Please do not put?
Right, I'm just trying to figure it out, because you have a, what I'm concerned about is that you have an entire board with no training that are actually making recommendations, and I'm wondering if any of those recommendations have ever been legal. And that was my concern.
I don't, I, my opinion is that it does not effectively galvanize their decisions, unless their decisions, if they'd be attackable by someone for being arbitrary and capricious because they did not have the training. I put this in a memo to you this past week, that the way that the lawyer would attack it is to say that, since your board members did not have any training whatsoever, their decisions would be arbitrary and capricious because they didn't know what they were doing.
Would their decisions be arbitrary and capricious without any kind of counsel, i.e. city planner, or anything like that?
You know, that's a fact question that you deal with in the context of the?
You need to speak into the mic.
Here's how it works. In the, in the, in the context of a specific decision, someone wanting to challenge the decision of the planning and zoning board?
Mm-hmm.
Would say their, their decision was completely arbitrary because it doesn't comply with any kind of planning practice, any kind of sound planning practice.
Mm-hmm.
And as support for that judge, here's evidence that they never got any training to begin with. They had nobody, no regulatory director there to direct them.
Correct.
They just did this, they wandered completely off the reservation. It's one factor to be considered.
Correct.
But it's not determinative. Just because you didn't have the training doesn't mean that your decisions were arbitrary. You might have lucked into it, or you might have read some books on your own.
Correct.
I think one of the things that the planning and zoning training issue goes to is training and ethics, to know what the Louisiana Code of Governmental Ethics provides for people who serve on boards. And then there's also the question of, can you get the basics of what sound planning practice is? Know what spot zoning is?
Mm-hmm.
You know, know, know what the, you know, why C1 to R1 is a big jump instead of R1, R2, it's a different kind of standard.
Correct.
Those are the kinds of things that I think the training can help with.
Mm-hmm.
But just because you doesn't, you don't have it, doesn't mean that your decisions are going to be invalid.
Arbitrary and capricious, right.
Invalid.
Yeah, just because you don't have the training doesn't make you either which way.
Right.
Yes.
But it's one, it's one factor. Not having it opens up the decisions.
Just like not having any kind of a regulatory director or planner?
Correct.
Is, does not make it either which way.
Especially, you know, the bigger the?
But not having either definitely does not put you in a good situation.
The bigger the zoning issue, the more important those things are.
Correct.
Because once you vote no, perception becomes arbitrary and capricious, and you're about to get a lawsuit.
But also, even though we just gave a recommendation, I mean?
It's the law says the law says.
But we don't make a vote, it's just a recommendation to the board.
Right. Right. And one of the points I was trying to make to Councilman Wheeler was, you know, the nomination and appointment process to the commission is now getting excessively politicized. That's really not a political board. I know you don't want to think that, but it, that's really, those guys are supposed to try to take an unjaundiced view of planning law, being advised by experts, to come up with a decision.
That's why we're appointed when I voted.
Exactly. And then when it comes here, that's when the political fight starts. This is where the political decisions get made. So I did look at this, there are two attorney general opinions on this nomination thing that I think are in conflict. But I have to tell you that reading all of this together, it, you know, the, it comes out to this, the mayor nominates and the council approves, except for persons who have been initially appointed by the chief executive, which I don't think obtains anymore. I mean, the initial appointments were made solely by the mayor. When you set the board up, the mayor puts them all on, and then after that, it becomes a, she nominates.
But what about this? So what is written is and/or in Harahan law?
Yeah.
Correct? But, and that is just the opinion of the attorney general, it's not like a judgment or anything like that, correct?
Yeah, but?
So that is not the law?
It's an opinion.
It is an opinion, correct? Yes or no?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We'd get a different opinion if we asked another attorney tomorrow.
Correct.
But we do have the law. But here's what the law says. Here's what the law says. The successor, successors of the members of a planning commission, whether a parish or municipal planning commission, shall be appointed by the parish governing authority or the local legislative body of the municipality.
Right. And the point that I'm trying to get across here is that, is that not to, you know, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to like argue the point on who's right and who's wrong as far as like what you say, the mayor, the council, you know, everyone who gets along and doesn't. I'm looking for an avenue to move forward.
Right.
And to, you know, we, y'all can fight about everything else. I just want to get the planning and zoning streamlined again and try and get some progress.
I'm with you.
I'm going to be quite frank.
Okay.
I think I have floated a name to this board, to this council, that is in high esteem.
Okay.
It's not a political name.
All right.
Other than she's been mayor?
That's a political name.
And city clerk. And I can't even dare put that person up, who is esteemed by almost all residents in this community?
All right.
Because I won't even get a vote on that woman to do that.
And this lady fiercely campaigned for you, so it's, it is very political.
Can you? Fiercely? She supported change. She has always?
Okay, okay, well, you see, now we're getting?
Yeah, 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 let's, so?
So, are you bringing?
This guy's just trying to get a full vote.
Right. And so, and so the other, the other question, I guess, not like a counter, but a second part to that question is, has the council brought anyone forward that they would like to have nominated as well?
They have.
Wasn't accepted.
And there's members now that I'm willing to reappoint and put that some appointments up.
Right. I mean, you reappointed me, you know?
Right.
And that was a great decision. You know?
Did I know you before?
No, not at all. No, we talked for like two hours.
What did I do?
We talked for two hours, and we were very blunt to each other.
Right. I called you in, we had a mature conversation.
Correct.
And I said, can you just make solid decisions? Will you do your research? I didn't ask you what your opinions all were on anything, did I?
Right.
Mr. Gibb, can you elaborate just on what you said just a second ago about the legislative board?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I heard it correctly, I'm sorry.
No, you're the legislative, you're the legislative authority, there's no doubt about that.
The legislative authority to do what?
The successors of the members of a planning commission, whether a parish or municipal planning commission, shall be appointed, it's not nominated, appointed by the parish governing authority or the local legislative body of the municipality. That's you guys, as the case may be, for terms of equal and for all members. And it goes on about how you put them.
However?
But, so the question is, you know, you know, like I was, like I got this wonderful job. I was nominated, but you guys?
He's a wonderful job.
But you guys made the final decision, you know?
It's the definition of the word.
So, you know, yeah, it's a strict technical matter, she's the nominating authority, and look, she can nominate half the city of Harahan, you can just sit here and not vote for any of them. I mean, that's your prerogative.
And that's the direction that we're headed in, as far as, you know, whoever, you know, if we can have, if we, it should be a reciprocating relationship. i- if we can have, if we, it should be a reciprocating relationship with everyone.
I have a simple joke, like, you're stating the law, Bures is stating the opinion.
And that's an opinion. Tim, can I ask you a question? If I, if the law says that I can't stab Nicole, but somebody, a lawyer says, it's really not that bad, what are you going to do? The law, you know what I mean? That's where I'm getting at, you know?
I'm reading to your revised statute thirty one oh three D.
That's how I see it.
We have a few other things we-
Well, I would just like to mention something to you, Mr. Medio. I did approach this mayor about maybe some kind of compromise, that I'm sure this, everybody would agree, could be needed right now at this moment. We actually spoke more today than we probably have ever smoked, spoke, not smoked, excuse me. In my two and a half years-
We got it.
You got it. To try to work out some type of compromise. We started narrowing down how many positions were open, whether it be somebody that needs to be extended another term or those that need to be replaced by those that resigned. And we received another resignation today. There were six spots that potentially need to be filled. Mr. Jimmy was given his position last month, so we're down to five. Three have officially resigned, one could be extended another term and one's kind of questionable, we're still getting a clarification on that. So, I reached out to me, I think, starting Tuesday, we discussed this, to try to figure out, let's agree. Let's agree to disagree.
I called you, right?
I answered.
I said, let's make an agreement.
Why don't we do this? I'm literally playing fingers here, okay? You got one, let's give one to the council, let's play fair. And then we started beginning to fact that, well, this person's pro man, this is pro council. It's not about who's pro this.
No.
It's what's best.
Who's pro Harrigan?
I don't, wait-
Thank you.
Bingo!
I, I agree. So, I was just trying to be nice. Because clearly, at this point, I don't know if it's, and I, I believe I discussed with you, because I know your anger and, and you've addressed it with this council.
Yes.
I was trying to come up with an offer and compromise.
I take my position very seriously.
And, and we know it needs to move forward, because right now, you have potentially six people. Hopefully, all six of those show up come Wednesday. You have six, we counted. You, Pat, Dale, Mr. Jimmy.
Pat.
But Pat can continue to serve as long as he's not replaced.
Correct. Okay.
Brian Whittle, Dale, Pat, you, Steve Dalforaz, and Mr. Jimmy. Hopefully, all six of y'all show up next Wednesday, even if there is a meeting, I don't know if we even discussed that issue. So, we're trying to figure out that statistically, maybe the attendance is not where it needs to be, so let's try to fill them. So, I did approach this mayor of a little offer and compromise and say, mayor, can we work something out? Mr. Jimmy, obviously, was maybe a pro mayor person, I don't know if that's the term I want to use, and that's no disrespect to you, Mr. Jimmy, obviously. You know, I want to vote, I want to vote this person in. I mean, when I was nominated to planning and zoning, it was kind of the consensus, everybody got along. I think other members that were voted before just kind of got along. There was none of this power trip, that's what's going on right now. I, I nominated, she asked for recommendations, I gave Mr. Tommy Buddy, completely qualified. First of all, I thank him for even willing to serve, because the few people I've spoke to said, yeah, you freaking mind, I'm no, there's no way I'm doing that. Councilman Johnston put up a, a recommendation. The mayor's not, and she didn't nominate our recommendations, but she puts up hers. Well, that's not compromising.
Well, I did compromise.
What, mayor? Mayor, hold up. I'm speaking, I didn't, I don't interrupt you, you always interrupt me, I swear. So, I'm trying to figure out a way, let's do this. What if we figure out, okay, Mr. Jimmy's mayor pro, I guess, pro mayor, she's saying, and maybe we need to put somebody this, but again, that's not the issue, we're trying to figure out a way. And then it kind of came down to, well, maybe she'll give us two, and then we get two, but then there's this fifth one that maybe we'll kind of agree to disagree together, and then I kind of like, you know, said, you know what? No, I don't know why this, so then I suggested, why don't we do this? There's five spots left, right? Every council member gets a spot. Good, bad, indifferent, we will respect, if Sue Benton puts up somebody that's pro mayor, we will respect it. I think that's fair, there's nothing wrong with that, just like the police advisory committee that I put up. Two people appointed by the chief, five is appointed by the council. Every council member gets a person, good, bad, or indifferent, we're going to respect it. I was just kind of thinking, let's use the same example for this. I was told, no. So, I want you to know, I've tried.
That's not exactly how the conversation went.
Oh, my God.
And of course, of course, Carrie.
Tina, you're going to sit there and say, when I asked you-
Carrie.
Oh, my God.
Wait, who's interrupting whom now?
Oh, that's the norm for you, go ahead.
I reached out first to Ms. Wheeler. I was hoping that we were, to Councilman Wheeler, hoping to reach this guy. And basically, came very frank. She brought up the pro mayor, pro this one.
Oh, my.
I don't want that to be that way. I said, I even said on, we, we had it all worked out, we thought it was going to go, and I even said, can I-
Let me remind you, no, because you were, you were basically lying. You even wrote, even put Dale the last, for the council, appoint Dale, so that's one for the council.
I take-
So, who's talking about pro mayor, pro council? Well, so do I, wouldn't you-
You, I, I'm just going to-
Oh, my God.
You characterized our conversation, I wanted to characterize it, but it's not getting anywhere. So, at this point, I would like to call a special, we have a, um, page. Thank you. I'd like to call a special meeting on August tenth at five thirty to have the nominations for the planning and zoning board on, on the agenda.
On August tenth?
Yes. At five thirty.
With August seventh in the future?
Yes. Special meeting. Now, we have some, um-
Did we get the vote on this one?
Wait, what, we're not in the-
I have the mayor to call. But why, why are we calling a special meeting when we're here right now to talk back?
We have other things on the, I think we could use some conversation, cool down, and try and move forward.
I'm cool as a cucumber, man.
We have other things on the agenda that we have to get on through, and we've got twenty minutes left.
So, are you talking before midnight?
Well-
So, August-
You talking about for the planning and zoning, that's like number two, is that what you're talking about?
Um, are you out? When do you leave, Gail, to talk about the appointments?
When do you leave?
Okay, that's fine, I want to talk about the, the, can't wait to get to that bar.
Are you out that whole week?
Because I'm not done.
We just hope that the six that are, are up to date. Tuesday? Oh, second to third.
Does it ha, is it written in order that it has to be the first one day of every month? Because, you know, I mean, we, we got a third Thursday, but we can change it, but I guess.
Gail, are you out that out entire week?
Can I? What about Wednesday? No, no, what about Wednesday? Okay. What? That's the zoning board meeting. And what time do they meet?
Is it the first one?
Okay, so, we're going to move it, the special meeting is going to be moved to August ninth at five thirty. And, uh, on the agenda?
Don't know.
The agenda will be, um-
Well, I mean, how, how can we call it if people are not available?
We'll see.
Oh. So, now, what day do we meet?
The ninth. Notice is given, the mayor can call us. Nominations to the planning and zoning board. Both, nominations and appointments.
Gilbert, do you ever wonder what you got yourself into?
Yes, he does. Item number two, under new business.
The Jefferson Chamber is seeking permission to allow the Tour de Jefferson bike ride to pass through the city on September tenth, twenty seventeen. The bike ride will start at seven thirty a.m. and finish at four p.m. in Jefferson Parish at Laffinier Park, passing through the city of Harrigan.
Chief, are you fine with that?
We sent, um, an email today. The area they're going on is Riverside Drive, Colonial, and Hickory. Riverside Drive are River Road, and Colonial are Parish Roads, and Hickory is a state highway. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce has been notified as such. We, we, we handling the detail within Harrigan on those areas for this function.
So, you're fine with that?
We're fine with it, yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to grant permission?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Hewitt, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Permission is granted. Um, I think, planning and zoning, we've already addressed on number three. Can we, um, amend? Okay.
As long as none of y'all talk. So, we, we addressed the full court, we addressed the tenants' behi, behavior. Tim, so, I'm sorry, chief, we're having, we're having issues last time where a citizen was fighting with one of the board members, not like fistfight, but like argument, and, you know, I, me and somebody was literally saying, like, hey, stop, shut up, you know, and-
All you do is call them next door, they got a policeman to come over. Why, if you notify me beforehand, if you think the meet's, be contentious, we'll have somebody there.
So, I know that according to Roberts rules, that we're, you know, we'd have to make a motion and all that stuff and due process, I guess, before, like, y'all can actually tell them they have to leave. Because I, I think that we need to stop having people curse from the audience at the coun, at the board, and, you know, you saw how it is today, it was, it's like worse than what it's like in here, you know, and this, it's pretty bad, so.
Call me beforehand and go have somebody-
I know, I do. This is, I should have brought a drink.
Go have somebody available.
Hmm?
Call me beforehand.
All right.
If you think you need somebody, we'll have somebody available.
What we'll do is, I'll, if you don't mind, I'd like to forward you the email or whatever and say, hey, look, you know, we're going to all be there, so, that's about it. And I'm good, I guess, from there, so, all right.
Number four.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you all for having me.
Good job, good job, thank you. Number four, new business, number four, Brandy Boudreaux is requesting permission to hold a block party on Saturday, August nineteenth, twenty seventeen, from six p.m. to eleven p.m. on Elodie Avenue, from Riverside Drive to forty-five Elodie. She's also requesting that the street be blocked off for the block party.
Chief Walker, are you?
We're okay with it, we're going to have a deep, go have a pretty detailed-
Hey, brother.
Do I have a motion to grant permission?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Hewitt, all in favor?
Yeah.
We, any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays.
We already did number five.
Permission is granted, number five, we've already done.
Number six is the HPD Advisory Committee nominations.
Chief, do you have your members that you're submitting?
Yes, I do. Mr. Leo Savoy and Mr. Jason Brusick.
Who's second, I'm sorry?
Jason. Jason Brusick.
Brusick.
Would the city clerk please note for the record that the chief's appointees are Leo Savoy and Jason Brusick?
Yes, ma'am.
And the council, do we have nominees?
Yeah, um, I would like to nominate Mr. Ed Kraus.
I have, uh, Councilwoman Wheeler nominating Ed Kraus.
Second.
I have a second to proceed with the vote, all in favor of Mr. Ed Kraus.
Yay.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays, Mr. Ed Kraus.
All right, go now.
Sue, do you question?
I didn't listen to the email.
Huh?
I didn't think that Gail or Johnson-
Johnson.
Yeah, they did. You seconded that? You seconded that?
I did mention, um, about we do this, for those who don't have nominees of this one, we'll put it on the next one. Take them ahead of your-
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we'll just do it the regular scheduled meeting, that, we don't have to do it the special meeting.
I guess you could add it to the-
No. Oh, okay, well, then, can we, can we amend the agenda? Well, I don't know if everybody's going to be present at the special meeting.
At the special meeting, we'll amend the agenda, we'll also add the nomination, one additional nomination to the police committee.
Well, but there might be potentially more than just one, you have to check the other ones.
Well, okay.
We'll, okay.
Councilman Bodie?
I'd like to nominate myself.
Um, can you nominate yourself to a committee from the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Bodie is nominating himself, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Well, I think you have to abstain from your vote.
I'm voting yay for me. Yay for me. I'll abstain.
We abstained. We have one abstention, four approvals, and Mr. Bodie is on the board.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Carla Ferreira.
Um, Councilman Johnson nominates Carla Ferreira, do I have a second to proceed with the vote? Councilman Bodie, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Carla Ferreira is appointed, and Ms. Hewitt?
I would like to vote Wesley Turner.
Wesley Turner?
Second.
I have a motion to nominate Wesley Turner by Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Johnson, all in favor to approve the nomination?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Uh, Wesley Turner is now appointed, and Councilman, uh, city clerk, madam clerk, you've got all the names, correct?
Yes.
Ed Kraus, Mr. Bodie, Carla Ferreira, Wesley Turner, and the last person will be on the special meeting-
Got it.
For August ninth at five thirty.
Should have Ed Kraus, Tim Bodie, Carla Ferreira, Wesley Turner.
Right. Um, now, we can go to-
Police Advisory Committee.
Address the council, is now open, anyone wishing to address the council?
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting.
Tommy Buddy, seventy-two, zero eight, Stonely Drive, three things. One is with the bike race, um, personal story about twenty-five years ago, there was a St. Rita run down River Road. I live on River Road, my car's parked in my garage, I go to pull out, and I got fifty or a hundred kids, and I had a team of eighteen kids at St. Rita for a ball practice, and I was the only coach showing up. So, all these people were going to be dropping their kids off, and there weren't going to be an adult there. A panic. I'm not opposed to people using Riverside Drive, but I didn't get any kind of notice, and it caused a, it scared the heck out of me, because I didn't know how I was going to get to the, to the playground in time to be the coach. So, we need to figure out how to notify all the residents on Colonial and Riverside.
They could be on the levee, I think they get off at Riverside, they get on Colonial. I don't think they're going to be dra, rotting a, a long length-
Oh, perfect, perfect, thank you, G.
On Riverside.
I mean, I'm not opposed to it, it's just that I can plan for it, my neighbors can plan for it if they know, but that won't be an issue there. Um, the, the second item, um, and this is addressed to the mayor, assuming for a moment that the AG opinion is correct on appointment, uh, nomination by the mayor, um, and, and vote by the council, for a moment assume that that is, would be held to be the law. Mayor, it's politics, you're the leader of the city, it's your job to figure out, through whatever compromise mechanism is necessary, to come up with names that you can get approved. And it means you've got to play politics heck, that's the job, and I'm sure you can rise to that level. You can't draw a line in the sand, you've got to figure out.
Mr. Buddy, I offered to nominate you tonight, as recommended by Councilman Wheeler.
Well, I recommended it before, you didn't.
I, I taught, we had conversation, and-
I'm just saying.
I, I ra, we had conversation, and I said I was willing.
So, mayor, that's great. That, my point is, is that, you know, you all have to compromise for, for government to work. You have differing opinions, but it's politics, and sometimes you've got to do something you prefer not to do. Well, I'm glad that we're moving forward in that direction, it's good for the city. The last item is, um, at a previous council meeting, and these comments are regarding Mr. Bures. I recall Mr. Bures saying that he didn't have anything to do with the original Remelli contract, that you only got involved in the amendment.
No, what I said was, I was not involved in confectioning the RFP. I revised the RFP, as Mr. Brusick is seeing from the public records request, so I want to be very clear on this. I didn't confection the RFP. The emails will bear it out. The RFP was perfected by Calvin Hotmeyer, Mr. Kraus, Paige Pipitone, they put it together. It was a done deal, it came to me for final review, I looked at the Kenner contract, put some language from the Kenner contract into it for that, and the emails, record is very, very, very clear on this, Mr. Buddy. I disconfectioned RFP.
I, I never, I'm not going to say that you did.
What I did was, uh, you'd RFP make comments, I'm not sure this comment's made. But, you know, I wasn't, and you know, I wasn't involved.
Well, I'm just gonna read some excerpts.
Some people were talking.
So I'll, I'll motion for another, another minute.
I have a motion for additional men if I, Councilman Johnson.
I tell you what, I tell you what, no, it's late.
Any opposed?
I'll, I'll, I wanna review the, the meeting, make sure my understanding of what you said is correct. And I, I do wanna come back though and read some excerpts from the emails. I'll do it another time. It's not critical if it's done tonight.
Thank you.
So let everybody get out.
Jason Burzek, seventy-two oh four, Stonely, and I'm gonna try to be very, very quick. At the outset, and I want to apologize to Gilbert Burris, I called you an employee and that was wrong. You're not a, you're not an employee.
You called it salary.
Sorry, I called you salary, salaried employee. That was wrong. You're hired gun, you're a contract. You're an attorney on a contract who has charged more, I believe, based upon my understanding of the budget, than his original line item. Right?
Thirty thousand dollars to build the city today. This fiscal year.
So far for this fiscal year, thirty thousand dollars, when you're budgeted for maybe twenty-one thousand. Another thing I'd like to bring up with regards to the Remelli contract is I, I did get the, uh, the RFP, excuse me, the, uh, the public records request and all the, the records that go with it. And then there's a couple of emails that's from you saying, isn't the intention to present this for, quote, approval at the next council meeting? The response was, no, council will not be approving this. The mayor will execute and inform the council. You were never gonna know about this. Here you go. So, Mayor, when you sit up here and you talk about people following the law, this is evidence to me that you never intended to follow the law.
Mr. Bruzek, you can cherry pick all you want out of those emails, but quite frankly, you must have missed the emails where they were informed that the contract was expiring before the RFP went out. Then, when the.
Oh, don't hold your hand up to me.
Then.
I'm gonna answer you because it's still my time.
I'm just, I'll.
There's an email from her to you specifically saying, specifically saying, hey, why is this going off a request for proposal? This should be hard bid. This should be public bid. And your response is, oh, no, this is so much better. Okay, I wanna know, since Remelli was not the cheapest contractor, how is it they got it? It doesn't make sense. They are more expensive, and certainly now with the amendment. It doesn't make sense. How is it Remelli got this at all? They never should have been awarded this contract, much less given a very, and I've read it, and in my opinion, very favorable amendment to their contract. And so I asked you guys last time to please put the, the amendment on the, uh, the agenda so that it can be voted on or approved or disapproved by you guys. I'm gonna ask it again. I can say with confidence in my understanding that that email is crystal clear, her email is crystal clear. Ms. Wheeler, you are exactly dead on, it should have been public bid. The RFP process, which I've read the, the case on that, it could have gone either way. If it was up to them, they could have decided that. Thank you.
We will now close, address the council. Secretary's report.
Secretary's report for June, uh, total revenues, five hundred four thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Reports. Chief Walker.
Yes. Reports of the month of June two thousand seventeen. We had seven hundred and nineteen calls for service, non-accidents reported, issued seventy-five citations for a hundred and five charges, zero funeral escorts, full patrol requests. We had twenty-two narcotics arrests. Type charges were eleven felony, ten misdemeanors, and seven city. We had a hundred other arrests, a hundred ninety-nine other charges, eighteen felonies, one hundred fifty-two misdemeanors, thirteen city, and sixteen traffic. No murders, no rapes, no simple, I'm sorry, one simple robbery, no resident burglary, no non-residential burglary, no attempted burglary, no motor vehicle theft, no attempted motor vehicle theft. We had thirteen warstoning thefts and non-assaults. Thank you.
Ms. Hewitt?
I want me picked up tomorrow.
No report. Councilman Johnson?
No report.
Councilman Bodie?
Just real quick. I had, I had, I had, um, said at the last council meeting that I was gonna make these for, uh, the, the city's maintenance workers so that they could actually go out.
Nice. Very nice.
They're actually, um, they're actually in the Cole's office, and, uh, so if, uh, Ms. Edwin Marcela can pick them up. My only fear is that, I hope that these get used like the way they're supposed to, and they don't be used to identify the body when the garage door falls on top of them. Thank you, have a good night.